Good morning, everyone. I was just given some instructions on both sides of me, but good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all the cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised that our city council meetings are being broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gaston U2. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will not come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams is absent today. Councilwoman Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilton?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We do have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. Heath Williamson will lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the ability to know you, to serve you, Father. We thank you for the blessings at hand that you've given us repeatedly, Father, and ask that that continue. We pray for your wisdom, your guidance, knowledge, and discernment as we go through this business. Father, may it be done in a way that pleases, honors, and glorifies you. We give you all the thanks, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting that was held January 21st.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of January the 17th through the 23rd.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
The mayor had to go to another meeting and the proclamation, is there someone here concerning human trafficking? This is a proclamation from the City of Gaston. Whereas human trafficking is a very real problem facing the world today, and although it can take many forms, including debt, bond, forced marriages, slavery, and commercial sexual exploitation, in every case it goes against the core principles of individual freedom and civil rights that our state and nation stand for. And whereas the City of Gaston, Alabama, is committed to ensuring that our community remains on the front lines in combating this deplorable crime. And whereas, due to its secretive and illegal nature, it is difficult to accurately quantify the extent of human trafficking. However, the United States Department estimates anywhere from 600,000 to 800,000 people are trafficked across international borders each year. Most victims of human trafficking are women and children who have been marginalized and isolated from society. The difficulty in grasping the full scope of this problem can be further compounded because people often turn a blind eye to it. And whereas the first step in eliminating human trafficking is to educate others, we must work to ensure that all our residents are aware of this problem and how it spots it and how to spot it. We must work together as a community so that human traffickers are punished and to protect and assist their victims. Through the vigilance and perseverance of our citizens, effective enforcement of justice will someday be a reality. Whereas we ask all citizens and residents of this community to join in us in raising the visibility of this crime whose victims are all too often invisible. Together we can become more informed about this pressing issue and work to combat its injustices. Now therefore, our Chairman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gaston, Alabama, proclaim January 2020 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the City of Gaston. And this will be mailed to this. This is a very, very, very true thing that's happening. I'm quite sure, I was real shocked when I first found out that this is the, what is it? I-20 is a thorough fair. It's a thorough fair for human trafficking. So we just have to be mindful of what's going on around us, especially our children and especially women. I saw on items that on, one lady said that she just gonna stay 104 pounds so she'd know they wouldn't be able to get her up in the truck. But anyway, we just have to be mindful of what's going on, what's happening around us. But human trafficking, I think I said it on the council a while back and it seemed like it picked up, but they could be just right next door to us and we don't really know anything about it. So just be mindful of what's going on around us and when you see something, as they tell us, say something. The next items will be, there's no unfinished, there's no unfinished business. We have not today. Our first item, and this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering the abatement of nuisance on property at 802A in District 3. The last known owners are Domingo Dowell with Life Estate to Heather Whitaker, Chester Whitaker, and Tyler Brotham and Shereeta Whitaker Dowell, Life Estate. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this resolution? If so, will you come over to the podium and give your name and address, please? Morning.
My name is Domingo Dowell.
My name is Tyler Brotham.
Okay.
And I guess you'll need a status report or pretty much have somebody working on. I drive trucks, so I'm not here on a regular basis. I'm usually gone three weeks to four weeks at a time. With the holiday season just passing and the rain that's been going on for the past week or so here, haven't been able to get started this week, but I do have somebody that's there from Birmingham, Alabama, that's coming to finish doing the caulking. But I have got the carport that's been removed and some of the windows have been adjusted. So now that hopefully we have some good weather for the next couple of weeks or so, we'll be able to get back to it.
So what are you asking for today?
Well, I guess for an extension to be able to get some work done now that we have some weather that we can actually work in.
Okay, well, we have, we have to hear from our building director and from then we'll give you a status on what's to be done unless Councilwoman Worthy has any questions. We'll just wait and see what the status is from Mr. Harbison.
Okay.
All right. Have you spoken to, have you all spoken to Mr. Harbison, who is over the building?
My sisters went to, I'm not sure who they all spoke to. My other sister Heather spoke to somebody, but I'm not sure who she spoke to.
Did she give you any direction as to what was said to her?
She said, once we get something completed, to take some pictures and to bring them up, but that was all that she had told me.
Okay, has that been done?
Nothing has been fully completed that I think a picture should have been taken of, but if y'all wanted pictures of the caulking and the removal of the carport, that was on the outside, so I'm quite sure they already have a picture of that, but I'm not totally sure.
Okay, all right. We'll hear from Mr. Harbison and then we'll just let you know so you can be seated out.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in May of last year. As far as the date on the pictures that you're looking at, there have been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in July of 2019. We're certainly not opposed to giving some additional time. I believe everything that needs to be done to the exterior of this property and cleanup can be done in a couple of weeks. So I guess we would ask for the case to be tabled. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
What Mr. Harbison is saying, that looking at our pictures on the outside, it really needs to be cleaned up around on the outside, you know, making sure that the yard looks good and everything, but you need to, you know, you need to be in communication with him. And so I think that's one of the problems. You know, your sister may be handling it, but you all need to communicate between you, between each other so that you all would know what's going on as far as the property is concerned. Because if Mr. Harbison, we'll probably table it for...
30 days is what I'm gonna ask.
Uh huh. But after then, if it comes back to us again, that will be it. All right?
Thirty days.
No, I'm just saying, he's the one who helps to bring the property up to standards. So there should be some communication with the Building Department. Mr. Harbison is in the Building Department. So you know, you should have a communication with him, but basically what he's saying, that the outside really needs to be cleaned up so it looks, looks fine and you can continue to work on the inside, but the outside needs to be worked on and cleaned up, but there needs to be a communication with the Building Department.
Does he have a card?
You can see him after, after the meeting, but yes, he has a card and he has a number and they'll give it to you.
His information's available on the city website, too. You can go to cityofgaston.com and find his office contact information.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I've heard several complaints on this property, so please, within 30 days, get it done, okay?
Okay.
I'm gonna ask that we table it for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 302 Henderson Street in District 6, and this is Angela M. Bradberry and Wanda F. Wallace being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in May of last year. There have been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in May, but you can see in the pictures, no work has been done. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Well, whether I pass this round, Mr. President, from me, I've had a bunch of complaints about this from all the surrounding neighbors and people on the next block, or I've complained about this also. It's been going on, ongoing problem for probably a year over there.
Mr. Cannon, you, Councilman Cannon, you've seen the house, is the structure part of it?
It's, it needs to be, it needs to be gone.
Okay.
There's some more, there's some more problems that I don't want to discuss right now, but it's, I make a motion that we'll abate the nuisance, please.
Sure.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
No council action will be taken regarding the abatement of nuisance on property at 308 Henderson Street in District 6 because there's a new owner. Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing the nuisance abatement for liens for demolition, and this is on property located at 1325 Marksdale Street in District 2, Chatel Martin, AKA Chanel Martin, First Family Financial Service, and Nancy Christine Williams being the last known owner. And the amount of this lien is $2,741.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens on demolition property at 311 Morningview Drive in District 2, the State of Alabama Possible Right of Redemption of the Estate of Jimmy R. Beadle, also known as JR B., the last known owners, and the amount is $3,441.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next demolition lien for nuisance abatement on property is located at 306 Roseland Drive in District 2, F&amp;A NP LLC Redemption Right of Herbert Kenberu Downey and his or her heirs if deceased, and the State of Alabama being the last known owner. The amount is $3,291.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is a warning of bid number 3425 for annuals and parental flowers for 2020, and the purchasing agent has been recommended and awarded the bid to Dixie Green Incorporated, and the amount is $31,755. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is appointing a member to the Gaston Beautification Board. This appoints Sarathah Goggins for a term ending July 31st, 2020. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next appointing, and we're appointing members to the Library Board. This appoints Viv Holland for a term ending February 16th, 2024, and it appoints Kevin Riggsby and we appoint Glenda Hicks for the term ending February 16th, 2023. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing supplemental agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation. This is an expansion of the ADA Compliance Sidewalk Improvement Project. This is authorized by Resolution R. 416-18. There is a federal funding increase of $88,922.14, bringing the total estimate cost to $458,452.68, and the city's 20% match is $91,690.54. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? And I believe this is where sidewalks and just a brief minute, city engineer, I think you can tell them where this is a completion of where these sidewalks will be.
Yes, ma'am. This is essentially a carryover of the last grant award that we had for this type of work. This is handicap ramps in the East Gaston area. We weren't able to complete all that we attempted to at the last run, so they awarded us an additional grant to complete that process. So these, this project is all in the East Gaston area.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is authorizing agreement with Coosie River Team Trail, and this is for the city to sponsor a series of four fishing tournaments to be held between March and October 2020, in addition to directing the City of Gaston Super Tunnlement, and the amount is $12,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is a first reading. This is where an ordinance authorizing convales of property that's located at 1530 Alabama Street, Zion Williams Lewis has offered $100 for this property. This ordinance will be presented for first reading and the council will vote on it next week. Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. It's a request about Engineering Department, ask for unanimous consent. It's a resolution authorizing a revised tender and lease agreement with Bob Smith Construction to allow for the completion of the East Gaston Community Center project.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Heath, would you like to say anything about this so we can get this completed?
I think, I think, I think it's the attorney that needs to say something.
Oh, okay.
I would be happy to, with the help of our wonderful city attorney. I'm not gonna mess that up. This is essentially just some tweaks to the original tender and release agreement that we had already agreed to. The tender contractor that will move in and complete the project had an attorney as well and had just a few, as it was stated, I believe, immaterial items that didn't affect anything as far as the terms and conditions regarding the city. Specified a couple of things, gave it a little different, I guess, a more detailed definition. So if you, or if you've been there within the last week, the contractor has begun to mobilize to the site. I'm sure everybody's excited to see that, that has seen it. As far as the remainder of the job, this will allow us to sign the actual contract. So he's, he's moving in, mobilizing, not really doing anything material yet, but as soon as we pass this today, or the council passes this today, we'll sign the actual contracts and that's the last step. Those are literally on my desk as we speak, so they're about to run. Finally. Applause and hurrahs and everything in between.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Everybody in East Gaston, thanks you. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Madam President, I have one. Comes from the Engineering Department. This is a resolution awarding bid number 3426 for the Amphitheater Drainage Repair Project to CBNA Construction LLC in the amount of $52,387.47.
Second.
For unanimous consent.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Madam President, I've got a couple. The first one is from the Legal Department. This is a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with Gaston Warehousing for a portion of building T4, Sections A, B, and C, for a term of 12 months.
Second.
Ask for immediate consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Only thing I'd like to say is that we're just happy that we're able and glad to assist Gaston Warehouse on being able to keep people employed is the main thing.
Absolutely.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Congratulations, Gaston. The second one is another item from the Legal Department, and this is actually a resolution authorizing an agreement with Ribbons LLC regarding the payment of $124,367.42 in past due sales tax, as well as future sales tax and occupational tax to the City of Gaston. I'd ask for immediate consideration of this.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I would just, I'm sorry, I'd like to move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion?
That's what I was waiting on. I just want to say, because obviously this is a big number, y'all, you see this amount due in back sales taxes, and I just want to add some context here. This is one of the two entities that the city actually took legal action against recently in hopes of collecting back sales taxes, some occupational taxes. There are several issues at play here, and I just want to make it clear that even at this point, this late in the process, after time and time again of failing to meet deadlines for tax emissions and failing to meet certain agreements, the city is still willing to bend over backwards to create a financial payment plan to keep these entities in business. And the fact is that if this, this financial agreement isn't honored, there's really nowhere else for the city to go. I mean, it would become a full-on legal matter at that point that's out of our hands. So I'm glad that Ms. Rossar and the representatives from Ribbons were able to come to an agreement on this. So again, I'd like to ask that we move for adoption.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Are there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one I'd like to ask for unanimous consent for, please. It's from Engineering Department. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Engineers and Associates to provide the super engineering plans and specifications required to construct the improvements to the sports park at the Gaston State Community College, and this is budgeted for $345,300.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Are there any discussions?
For those y'all who are wondering, this is the project over behind Gaston State that was announced several months ago. This is the first allocation of funds that were budgeted in the 2020 budget to go towards that project. So this, hopefully, will get the ball rolling on what will be a fantastic project for the city. So this is the first step.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have two. Ask for unanimous consent to consider ordinance 003, amending certain sections of Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Gaston regarding dangerous dogs and the tethering of animals.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Now move to adopt.
Second.
Are there any discussions?
Yes, Madam President. On January the 14th, the Public Safety Committee met, made the following recommendation: no tethering, 60-day grace. That's it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And I would like to thank everybody who had a part in this with photographs, petitions, and so on and so forth, because this was a community effort, betterment.
Mr. President, if I may, could I get the people that was at the meeting this morning on the 14th to please stand? It was for all this tethering to do away with it, please. You can see there was all those folks here that's for that, and this is just going to be a good day for the City of Gaston, a good day for animals, and people will be responsible for animals now have to be responsible, and maybe the animals that was on these chains and these short ropes and stuff will have a life now.
Well, finally, we have an ordinance, not stacked on an ordinance, but one that we can enforce.
All right.
Okay. I do have another one.
Okay, did we vote on this one? Yes, ma'am?
We did, yeah. I'd like the unanimous consent to consider Resolution 026. Its amending resolution numbers are 3391-19 regarding acquisition of property in Its amending resolution numbers are 3391-19 regarding acquisition of property, increasing purchase price from $40,000 to $45,847.63.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
I'll move for adopt.
Second.
Are there any discussions?
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is that all our new business? At this time, Department reports, Mr. Scott from the library, would you just come and just make a statement concerning what's going on at the library as far as the genealogy?
Thank you, Madam President and Council. My name is Craig Scott, Director of the Gaston Public Library. Recently, I'm very proud to say, the library was designated as a jewel of the community. So my staff and I are very proud of that, but I've challenged my staff to make sure that we do remain a jewel. So we've been working on a new mission, new vision for the library. So we know we're the heart of the community, but with that, we need to enrich lives, inspire ideas, and create community. If our procedures, our policies don't meet that, then we don't do it. So with that, we're undergoing some major progress. We're taking our fourth floor at the main library, and we're going to move that over to Alabama City. Lots of reasons to do that, restrooms, easy in, easy out in Alabama City, and good lighting, and two other libraries that are very close, all genealogical related. So it puts us in a triad, a triangle, a hub, and we'll promote it like that. Once that fourth floor is done, and it's going on right now, we should be open in Alabama City next Monday, and we're on target for that. Once that's done, then in February, middle of February, we're going to start to move the teen zone from the second floor up to the fourth floor, giving our teenagers, our very active teen zone, much more room and much better space. Our third floor, our attic, also gives us a sound barrier down to the rest of the library so the kids can have some fun up there. And four cameras are being installed, too, so we can keep an eye on what's going on. Once that's done, then our teen zone on the second floor, a year from now, I'm applying for a grant, $20,000, a federal grant, to create a maker space. And what's that? It's hands-on learning and all kinds of good things to tell you about that once it happens. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. At this time, we'll have our citizen request, Ms. Kathy Vance. You give us, I've already called your name, but you give us your name and address.
Kathy Vance, 50 Alpine View, Gaston, Alabama, 35901.
Okay.
I am thankful that I live in a country where I can express an opinion and a request. I am also thankful that you, as a council, allow this opportunity. I also want to thank you for prayer and for the Pledge of Allegiance. It's been five years since the smoke-free ordinance was passed, so I was shocked, to say the least, to catch the corner of an article last week in the Times that this body passed an exception to the smoke-free ordinance that allows a hookah bar. My, what a tragedy to me and countless others. After years went by, I expected and trusted this council to protect its citizens. When you're driving and come to an intersection, you have to trust the light and the red-green changes. That's what I did with this group. I trusted you. I spent two long years with this council, attending work sessions, council meetings, talking with citizens, supplying members with proven information, and doing documented research. Surely, that was not invented. Gulf Shores and Orange Beach Resort towns that attract people from all over the country and beyond passed smoke-free ordinances years ago, and they've never looked back. I understand politics. You vote for my agenda, and I vote for your agenda. It's politics at its worst. In 34 years as an educational administrator, I survived 10 appointed superintendents and scores of elected board members. So yes, I understand. It's tough. I understand your situation. What I don't understand is your vote to allow something that kills. Smoke kills, in whatever form it's used. I did a great deal of research on smoke, hookah bars, vaping, anything that pertains to smoke, and nothing, absolutely nothing, is good about any kind of smoking. There is enough in society that is heinous and harmful that can't be prevented, but preserving a smoke-free ordinance and environment is possible. Every employee, every delivery person, every workman that goes into a public place should be able to breathe smoke-free air. No new business, in fact, any kind of business that permits any kind of smoking should be stopped and never allowed. Who is going to check on the requirements of the hookah ordinance? And who has checked on the cigar bar requirements in the smoke-free ordinance? Hookah smoking is not safer than cigarette smoking. A hookah is a water pipe with a smoke chamber, a bowl, a pipe, and a hose, specially made tobacco is heated, and the smoke passes through water and is then drawn through a rubber hose to a mouthpiece. The tobacco is no less toxic in a hookah pipe than in a cigarette, and the water in the hookah does not filter out the toxic ingredients in the tobacco smoke. Hookah smoke contains high levels of toxic compounds, including tar, carbon monoxide, heavy metals, and cancer-causing chemicals. In fact, hookah smokers are exposed to more carbon monoxide and smoke than cigarette smoking. An hour-long hookah smoking session involves 200 puffs, while smoking an average cigarette includes 20 puffs. That's 10 cigarettes in one session. Hookah smokers may be at risk for some of the same diseases as cigarette smokers. These include oral cancer, lung cancer, stomach cancer, esophageal cancer. Infections can be passed from one smoker to the other. Secondhand smoke from hookers can be a health risk for non-smokers. It contains smoke from the tobacco as well as smoke from the heat source, like the charcoal. These factors come from the lung association, the cancer association, and the heart association. I have a vast amount of information on hookah smoking as well as any kind of tobacco. It's going to come down to you protecting the citizens of Gaston and rescind the exception to the smoke-free ordinance. I am asking you to do this. There is no doubt that smoke kills. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have remarks by the council. Councilman Worthy?
I don't have any, Madam President, today.
Councilman Back?
No, ma'am, don't have any.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Vance, I'll address you personally because I was the one who introduced that variance. First thing I'll do is I'll correct one mischaracterization in your statement. Nobody up here feels obligated to vote for one another's agendas. That's not the case. We all speak and work very closely together, and we make impassioned arguments to one another about our ideas and our agendas, and everyone here is free to vote the way they want to vote. But I agree with every single thing you just said about cigarettes and tobacco in general and the impact that it has on the human body. I don't dispute any of that. I don't believe that it is a legislative body's responsibility to legislate morality. And what I mean by that is I do think it's our responsibility to protect the public interest and make sure that people aren't exposed to secondhand smoke. That is certainly something that falls on the responsibility of this governing body. And I think the ordinance specifically allows for certain restrictions. Obviously, only facilities that are specifically designed for smoking experiences are allowed to have smoking. They must have ventilation systems, and the ordinance goes into very clear detail that says it has to be a ventilation system that is inspected by the fire marshal and the building inspector at some point. It has to have proper ventilation that excavates the smoke above the building so that it cannot be exposed to individuals outside or around the building or other neighboring buildings. So there have been some great links to go to make sure that they are not impeding on other citizens unintentionally. Having said that, you cannot tell someone as a governing body that they can't smoke cigarettes. Sugar also kills you. Sugar's terrible for you, and in some more progressive parts of this country, they've even gone as far as to outlaw soft drinks, Coca-Cola, Pepsi. It's a slippery slope when you start telling people that they can't smoke because it kills them. We are all free citizens. The same freedoms that allowed you to come up here and give your very, very well-educated presentation is the same freedom that protects people who want to smoke. And if the fact is with a hookah bar or a cigar bar as a variance, these are real businesses. It is legal in Alabama to possess and smoke tobacco. And as long as it's legal in Alabama to possess and smoke tobacco, we have to have some avenue to allow for businesses to operate who want to have that luxury. Now, again, I'm all about a smoking ban that prohibits that cigarette smoke from impacting the other members of the community who don't want to be a part of it. And I think that this variance, along with the variance that allows for the cigar bar, does that. I think it takes proper precautions to protect people to a reasonable measure from being exposed to secondhand smoke, and it's isolated to these two entities. And there are many reasons why people smoke hookah. There are religious aspects to this, too, that a municipal government has to be mindful of. We can't go in and legislate and pick and choose what we think is okay and what's not. We can limit the impact on the rest of the community. And I think, even with the variance for the hookah bar, that this smoking ban still does that. It protects citizens from secondhand smoke while also allowing a young entrepreneur in this community to pursue a business venture, operating an entity that is legal in the state of Alabama that they can obtain licenses for and operate under the guidelines of the variance. But I just wanted you to note my opinion, and that's the reason I supported it. I certainly respect every single thing you had to say.
Ms. Vance, I was going to suggest to you, and you can talk to him, but we'll have, I'm not sure when our next public safety meeting is, but I was going to ask you to come to that public safety meeting where that you can further address and have this dialogue.
And I'll be happy to exchange my personal information with you as well. I think the time is a factor is the reason she would rather you not respond with. Okay. Madam President, I'll leave that to you.
First of all, I don't think that we are responsible for enhancing religious or otherwise if people want to smoke with their religion. Secondly, I have talked with a member of this council and a member of another council that they preserve their no's because just you are human, just like I'm human. And I say it 34 years, I've seen that. So, you know, I think that a lot of times we vote so we can get vote for things that we won't. I don't think that everybody up here agrees on everything all the time. Also, delivery people, people who work there that may have, they shouldn't have to pay, trade a paycheck for working, people who have to repair things. Those people are all coming in contact with smoke. And we did a lot of research. I'm not for people opening business at all. That's why the cigar bar, when we did all this, we left it because it was already an established business. We did not go after them. But we simply stated, and the council stated, there would be no more legal types of smoking businesses, and the ones of you who were on there at that time. So I won't take any more of your time, but, you know, I appreciate all the counsel.
But I do invite you to come to the public safety meeting and talk.
Okay, when is that going to be? All right, you tell me.
We don't have a date, but we have your number and everything, and Ms. Iva will, she'll let you know personally by call.
Okay, and I would like to have a copy of how the cigar bar has been monitored since that's in the ordinance. So if you could supply me with that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
And ma'am, I'd just like to say, I voted for everything they wanted in their district, and I can testify that they haven't voted on everything I wanted in my district.
Hey, I'm rolling on this side of the table here. I thought that was directed at. She gave me an opening, and I took it.
I don't want to have to call for the sergeant at arms.
We get to testifying up here, man.
Councilman Cannon?
Ms. Vance, apparently, you don't know who, Ms. Vance, apparently, you don't know who I am because I don't vote with the, I'm the only one up here that voted against it, the only one. And that, when you was talking about they passed it, they passed it. I didn't pass it. I voted no. You know the reason I voted no? I've had some kinfolks from me that died from smoking on a pack of cigarettes that said it's harmful to your health or something like that. I got on this phone and my computer at home, and I looked up everything about that bar you're talking about. I seen who was going to it on the videos, what it was all about, and I cannot vote for that. I could not vote for that, and I did not vote for that. And I don't vote for stuff if these people ask me to or they tell me to. Nine times out of 10, if they ask me to vote for something, I vote against it. This is my own vote right here, and I represent the people of Alabama City, Warner Park, and South Gaston, and I'm proud I do that.
Well, I'll just say this, like everybody, I, of course, have seen the data that shows that smoking kills. And like everybody in this room, I've been affected by cancer caused by tobacco. That still does not waver my principle that you cannot tell people what they can and cannot do. Again, sugar kills people. There is science that shows that sugar and fat kills people. Does that mean the next step is that we outlaw fast food, hamburgers, and soft drinks?
Well, you know what? You know what? We'll be here, and I'm finna silence Councilman Wilson.
It was my turn anyway, if you don't mind.
Are you through?
No, ma'am, it was my turn. He kind of interrupted me.
Sergeant at arms?
But I'll go ahead and turn my comments over to Councilman Reed. I know he has a lot to say.
I'll just slow it down a little bit. I happen to be the Public Safety Commission. I'm chairman, so when that time comes, Ms. Vance, I'll let you know. And I was here, and we voted that down completely, if you remember. And I agree, we had that agreement in writing, in voice vote, that it was grandfathered in that one. There never would be another one. Well, once you do that, now we've done this, now what happens? So that's what we're going to be talking about when you come next time.
Ms. Vance, you always have my vote against smoking.
That's why we tell Johnny one thing and do another.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
See, they don't remember, but citizens, sometime they listen to me and sometime they don't. I asked the question.
True is.
I asked the question. I said, what does this do to the smoking ordinance that we passed? And if there was anybody in pre-council, they heard me ask that question.
Absolutely.
But they still voted for the hookah bar. I guess because I said hookah bar instead of hookah bar.
That's what it turned into. What a hookah bar is.
But anyway, and I appreciate, I appreciate the citizens who come and support us, and I just want to thank you all for coming. This is, this is the democratic way. Everybody have a right to speak and express their concerns, and that's what, you know, that's what we're here for. If there's nothing else?
Move to adjourn.
I was going to, but then I see people over here trying to tell me what to do. I'm gonna wait a second. Do I have, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yes, I'm a second.